Secretary. I would like to remind everyone that this is a presentation. We will not stop for discussion during the presentation. I'm asking for your consideration and your professionalism. And the council will have time after, after our presentation. So, thank you very much for being here. Our report from professional consultant regarding the Florisville Police Department, Robert Taylor, PhD from Magellan Research Corporation. Thank you. Mr. Taylor, are you reading from this paper that you gave us?
He's talking about...
Oh. Are you reading from this paper?
No.
Oh, you just look. From the book? And, and once again, even with counsel, I ask that you not interrupt during the presentation.
So, I am the consultant. I mean, introduce you. I'll introduce myself. My name is Bob Taylor. I am a former law enforcement officer. I'm going to look through my background here in a second.
Mr. Taylor, if we can get you to come up by the microphone. We apologize, but we didn't have a long...
I don't have a lapel mic.
Can you hear me back there?
But it won't record.
Ah.
You can stand like right here or right here, DC.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. All right. So, I apologize. I would much rather be facing you. Community members are important. In fact, that's what this is all about, is the community of Florisville. And what the community deserves under its police department. Now, I want to go through my background because I want you to understand that I am in the policing business, all right? I have spent my entire career in policing. And this has got to be the first time in my 65 years of living where I've actually had someone think I was against policing because it's just never happened before. My partner, Eric Fritsch, and I were both contacted by the city to look at your city department of police. I've done a lot of these in the past, so has Eric. Eric had to kind of bow out to relief. He has some elderly parents and he had to take care of them. And so, I took basically the evidence on this project. But in the past, we've done projects almost identical to this. Most of them have been more allocation oriented in where you put patrol officers versus kind of efficiencies. Some of them are efficiencies for sure in there as well. Allen Police Department, McKinney Department, Police Department in Texas, Midloki, small community, south of Dallas. DeSoto, smaller city in the south of Dallas. North Richland Hills, Rolla, Lancaster, Richardson, El Paso, Fort Worth, Dallas. Worked inside Dallas Police Department for about three to five years as the director of the Crew Police Institute on a $10 million grant. Worked extensively with the chief there hand in hand. Five years there. Evaluated the number of internal departments of police inside Dallas. For instance, their internal affairs division or their specific precinct or a project that I had was to evaluate their project disruption with a 200-man department or 200-man overlay that they used to address crime inside the city of Dallas. Outside of that, I do a lot in the area of terrorism. Worked extensively for the last 25 years with our intelligence community in the Department of State as well. Cambodia National Police did a complete review of their juvenile justice and kind of sexual trafficking, human trafficking department. Looked at the Royal Thai National Police specifically in the area of corruption. Looked at the Istanbul Turkish National Police Department, primarily in the area of patrol deployment. Helped grow with last year, little bigger city, about 250,000 just south of Sacramento. Eugene, Oregon, looked at there maybe eight years ago in more of an feasibility study and started, actually a long time ago, this Yonkers, New York. So, another someone from New York, you know, the monitors that's just outside New York City. I've been used as a consultant by major organizations inside the United States, primarily Washington DC. A lot of times when a community wants their police department evaluated, what they do is they call one of these organizations. They call the Police Foundation. They call PERF, the Police Executive Research Forum, where they call IACP, the International Association of Chief of Police. Those people then turn around and they call a battery of people to come help them and work with them in evaluating those police departments. Oftentimes, I get involved in those, those kinds of jobs, okay? So, before all of that, I was a police officer for six and a half years up in Portland, Oregon. Sworn officer, worked the street, was a detective, lateral rank of sergeant. Worked in homicide, worked in robbery. Done major studies inside the state of Texas. Racial profiling for the Texas Department of Public Safety. Actually, UNT, University of North Texas, Eric Fritsch just met and secured a large contract to do all the racial profiling for the entire state of Texas on 15 million stops. So, it would be a big project. Talked about Crew Police Institute already. We did a huge study for the Texas Department of Transportation, which I headed on Texas Motor Vehicle Act back in about 2004, somewhere right in there. I've built two fusion centers, which are primarily automated fusion centers for crime analysis, intelligence analysis, looking at terrorism and the threat of terrorism against our country. One in El Paso, one in the city of Dallas. Speaking of El Paso, I just came back from El Paso. Been pretty much on contract for 25 years with the city of El Paso. Primarily working on continuous improvement for the police department. And I'm going to get back to that in a second. But I've taken different little modules of that police department and evaluated it for the chief, which has changed over the last 20 something years. And then, we did the first comprehensive staffing study for Bill Hill when he was the district attorney in Dallas County, and I headed that as well. So, that's kind of what I've done in Texas and kind of around. A little bit of an introduction of who I am. I also am a professor, so that means you're right. I have the leading textbook in police administration, Criminal Investigation, ninth edition. It's used in 250 organizations for promotion to the rank of lieutenant or above. The FBI uses it at their academy. I have the 12th edition of Criminal Investigation, which has been called the Vital of Criminal Investigation. I wrote the chapters on sex crimes, homicide, computer crime, terrorism, larceny. And my co-authors on the other ones. I have a new book on digital crime, digital terrorism, the fourth edition is just coming out. We just finished it. That deals with kind of the crime in the digital world. New book on terrorism, intelligence, homeland security. It's the best-selling terrorism book for Pearson, which is the largest publisher in the world. So, I was pretty happy about that. And then, Juvenile Justice, which is in its fourth edition. We're going to go into a new book on that. And then, last, Police Patrol: Allocation and Deployment, which came out in 2009. It's no longer in print because we hand it out to police departments all the time because it talks about how you continually look at what you do on patrol, how do you continually look at improving yourself as a police department, how do you continually do better than what we're supposed to be doing, which is serving the community, which is providing values in professional policing in the community. I've got, you know, a bunch of articles, you know, filed by the deep remains now. Current consultant for the US Department of Justice and the US Department of State on terrorism primarily. That was, you might have seen my mug on Fox or ABC or one of the local channels up in Dallas. I do a lot of work with them. I was featured last year in the Killing of John B. Ramsey, The Truth Uncovered by Involve, 2016. Looked at all of the documents relating to that case. Wow, I was pretty humbled, to be quite honest. It was maybe the least crime of the last two decades to be asked to review that and to do a documentary for A and E with pretty value. 2008, I was given the O.W. Lowson Scholar Award. It's a national award for policing, not criminal justice, not corrections, not criminology, policing. And I got to tell you, I'm damn proud of being associated with the police in our world today. My personal note there is simply this. This is the first time I've ever felt like I was pitted against a police department I came in and worked with. I usually am asked to come into police departments because I make things a heck of a lot better when I leave. And that's what I'm going to try to do here. So, we got to look at some of the problems that are out there. Now, when I talk about continuous quality improvement, it's not a one-time thing. I heard someone in the audience earlier say, "Well, why do we have to pay someone to come in and review?" You know, times change. And as organizations have developed, as they become more sophisticated or as they become more in the public eye. Look how much it's in the public eye here in Florisville. We look at trying to do a better job of what we do. So, police departments have this done routinely, day in and day out. They have this done. It's part of what makes policing in this country great. They have people from the outside come in, look at them, and be critical. We call it critical thinking. Testing each other. "Well, I don't like what you're doing this," or "Hey, maybe you should do something different." And so, that's what we do in American policing. We do it at the large level for big cities. We do it at the small level for small cities. The first job I ever did was with Jones Farm, Arkansas, rural community. So, you know, the differences in between rural policing and big, major city policing, yeah, there are huge differences. But the basic issues of the values for policing, how we serve the community and how we should protect our community is critically important and runs the entire campaign. Now, I want to make sure you all understand who I am because I've heard some crazy things. Like, I've known one of the councilmen from Oregon. I've never met him for four, three months. I've heard that I don't like the standings. That was an interesting one. It seemed to my wife, Maria Perez Staler, whose father, Rufio Herrera Perez, born and raised in Alice, Texas, served in World War II, whose family has a ranch and a farm down there still to this day. That was news to her. So, I want you to understand, I love Texas. I'm retiring. Heading out to Oregon, my home state, where I was a police officer. Brought my beautiful wife, and her biggest issue was I left Texas. I'm getting to it, all right? So, don't put me in a category of some guy who's against the police. Quite frankly, it's repugnant to me. I've spent my whole life supporting the police and will continue to do it today. So, we were contracted to the Professional Development Institute at the University of North Texas. And we came here to do this study. And I want to tell you what we did, or what I did. We looked at four primary areas, just like any other study. Staffing, operations, command, leadership. And then, we did a community focus group for Tri-Lite Delta doing. Given some real interesting, exciting things that happened. That was fun. And I'm kind of surprised that one of your audiences here, he called me, "Mr. Flores, I love you to death." But he called me and he asked me about this focus group a couple times. I tried to explain to you again. It is not ever supposed to be randomly selected people from the state or from the, from the community that you're looking at. These were people that only were looking at quality interaction between the police. So, they had to have been involved with the police somehow, whether they got stopped by traffic ticket, whether they were, you know, a victim or whether they were a suspect. It doesn't make any difference who asked them to come in. I just wanted to talk to them about what their quality, what their interaction was like, okay? I've talked, I've done this in the past. We ended up talking to people who were arrested for felonies, beating up the police, traffic tickets. I mean, it's just trying to look at how the police treated people. So, I interviewed all the city government people and the manager, all, you know, council members that I talked to, who'd hire me, the city attorney, talked to the new city attorney recently, interviewed all the police personnel, talked to the chief of police, talked to the assistant chief, the lieutenant, the sergeants, the officers. I think I talked to everybody but two people. One was on leave, and I just never got around to one of the other ones. I'm sorry. I talked to the outside agencies. I talked to your criminal district attorney for the 81st district that has five districts or five counties. I talked to criminal district, or the county attorney. I talked to the sheriff. I talked to the head of the DPS that's here. I talked to your ISD chief as well. And when I talk to these people, what I'm asking them is questions about how well can you get along with your police department? What's the working relationship at the lowest level of the organization? Do your officers work well with the Florisville Police Department? If not, why not? How do we make it better? When I talk to the officers in the police department, I usually open up with, "Well, how's it going out here?" Or, "What's happening in the Florisville Police Department?" You will see what dominated their minds in just a minute. Five constant things keep coming up over and over and over again. But the point is, I want to know, I want to know what those officers were doing. I went out on patrol one night with one of them. I spent a couple days, you know, meandering around inside the police department, looking at the facility. Be quite frank, you should be ashamed of it. You know, it's got broken windows, it needs paint, it's nasty, it's ugly. And it made me upset for those officers that had to go in there. It was dirty. And I think we deserve a lot better in this community than that, okay? So, that's what I did. Reviewed daily operations, looked at the policies and procedures. I wish I looked at policies and procedures. If I asked once, I asked 15 times, "Well, what policies and procedures are we using now?" Sometimes I got them. Sometimes I didn't. I'll talk about that in a minute. I reviewed personnel records. I reviewed training records on most personnel. I wasn't so interested in what happened to each individual. I was more interested in their training, whether they went to training. How was that training documented? And you'd be surprised, I'll just give you a little hint. There is no place that I've been fined, even though I asked, that would substantiate or document that your officers have passed a basic qualification course for shooting annually, which is requested and required by the state of Texas. Okay, I conducted a community focus group. I developed recommendations based on what I saw of the problems. I then went and tried to talk to people on those problems. And I apologize to you because I did not realize that there would be some kind of pre-warm-up kind of report on my report. I don't know what you heard. If I would have known that, I would have been much more judicious in whatever I was saying because I had no idea what was going to come up. I developed a final report. All you have to do is go to FOIA, Freedom of Information Act, request one. I'm sure they'll be coming out in a local paper near you sometime in future anyway, you know, in this community. But then, I presented these findings to the city council. It does my heart really good to see as many people here supporting the Florisville Police Department. And many of the communities I go to and I talk to, to the communities, they are against their police department. And so, I would be the first to tell you that you have a department that's got some major problems, but it's also got some major positives. And I don't want you to lose those positives. And so, I'm going to try to focus more on that as I go through here tonight. Five major themes inside your police department. Everyone wanted to talk about it. The hiring and subsequent promotion of Perry L. Hayden to Assistant Chief of Police. I'll get into great detail here in a little bit. That was on the minds of everybody. Most people were upset about it because Perry L. Hayden had not been a police officer for more than four months before he became the Assistant Chief of Police. Four months. Now, for those of you who own businesses, those of you who are in organizations, you want to ask yourself, "What do you think that would do if someone had been in an organization for four months and was all of a sudden promoted to the second-in-command?" Well, it caused a lot of problems. There was also the termination of a veteran officer, specifically Daria Fowler, who I believe, I'm not absolutely positive I can remember, somewhere around 14 years of experience. But more importantly, the only female officer on the police department was fired. Everybody wanted to talk about that. She has subsequently been hired back. And should have. The existence of two major factions within the department. One, which is says, "I, you know, the chief was great. I follow him anywhere." When was the last time you saw him? Well, I don't see him very often. But he's been a good chief. "What do you mean? Can you explain why he's been a good chief? Tell me how he's been a good chief. Why he's always supported me." "How? Why he hired me?" "How else has he been a good chief? Why he's tried to get us new cars? Tried to help us with our radio system?" Positive things, good things. There is a gross lack of credibility and competence inside your investigational division. The reputation of the two investigators is very poor inside the police department. No one inside the police department that I talked to actually supported them. Quite frankly, they were saying things like, "Gee, it takes two hours for him to get out to the scene if they're called." Number two complaint, "I don't think they really know what they're doing." Number three complaint, "Well, you know, one of them has been arrested for DWI. I'm not even sure he should be a police officer." "Can't he testify in court?" That question was asked of me. There is a lack of direction, policy, fundamental fairness relating to internal affairs and the disciplinary process. One person who may have been arrested for a crime is given a letter of recommendation pending the investigation. Another person who makes a, I don't even call you, whether it was called a racial snurf, but makes an anonymous statement, is terminated. Those result in EEOC complaints, equal employment opportunity complaints. And so, that's a huge disparity in the way you discipline people. There is also other people that were very upset because another gentleman had been terminated recently, who coached and basically trained many of your officers. And many of those officers were upset that he left the police department and was terminated. He now is working for Wilson County Sheriff's Office. These things kept coming up over and over and over and over again. And that's why I'm telling you about them, because they flavored everything. The most important thing for you to understand is inside your department, 18 sworn, it was 17 when I looked through it, you have two major factions. You have some people who really, you know, they boiled this all down to, "It's all about the chief." In fact, when I first walked in, I made a joke. You know, "I'm here to, to look at the department." And someone made the odd man comment, "Well, I thought you were kind of here to cut the head off the snake." I said, "What?" "You're here to terminate the chief." "No, I'm not here to do anything. I don't know anybody in that police department. I don't know anybody in that city council. I'm here to make this police department the best it can possibly be, given the resources it can to serve you as a great community." That's all I'm doing. Make sure you understand what I'm telling you is what was told to me. I'm not the guy who's all making this up. I have nothing to make up. I'm just telling you what was reported to me. And then, I make some recommendations based on that. So, I made 30 recommendations. So, we'll kind of get through a few of them and we'll go from there. You got 18 sworn at the time, there was 17 because Daria was, Daria Fowler was out going through a complaint process. You have no minimum staffing level. What does that mean? Most police departments, but particularly small departments, have minimum staffing levels. They have a number that they say, "You, we will not allow anybody to do anything. Vacation, sick time, you can't, you can't leave unless, you know, unless we have two or three people out there at any given period of time." I came out here on a Friday night. I went out and I was the only, the guy I was with was the only car in all of Florisville for that Friday night. Patrol in your, your department, okay? You also had the festival going on. So, after I got done, I went down to the festival. I noted that there were police officers down there working secondary employment? I don't know. Because I didn't know that, to be very frank, it was my first night here. Okay, you should have a minimum staffing level. I don't care what it takes to have two people on duty. To be fair, there was a detective in uniform that was really doing kind of follow-up stuff, but he was in the police department, listened to the radio. So, I feel pretty good about that. But there should be no way you send one officer out on the streets by themselves, ever, in this community, okay? So, you got to have those minimum staffing levels. And nobody should be allowed to do secondary employment, okay? Unless it's been cleared through some kind of central vetting process. Most departments have someone inside the department that coordinates all of that. That's not the case here. I talked to a couple people who was kind of coordinated, now the chief does it, now the assistant chief does it. I never did get answers. And I never got straight answers on a couple of them. So, my recommendation, establish a minimum staffing level. Designate one supervisor to fairly and openly coordinate secondary employment. There were some people that complained, "Well, the chief is up in command. They get the, they get the premium jobs while the rest of us kind of just get the crummy jobs." Well, you know, I kind of take that for granted. When I hear it five or six times, then I make note of it. But that one was one or two times, okay? I would also make an argument here that the chief of police should not be allowed to do secondary employment unless it goes directly through the city attorney's office. There's just too much potential for abuse. Why have that abuse? In the world of policing today, you've been reading the newspaper, it's ugly out there. And what we try to do in modern policing and progressive departments is to be open and transparent to the community. And to be quite frank, I'm really glad I'm here to talk to you about this. You should know what your police department is doing, the good, the bad, and the ugly. We should know everything that goes on. They work for us as citizens. So, I think those are important kinds of things to look at. When you don't have that, then you have problems inside your department and that's turned into your department. And let me assure you that the issue of secondary employment is an issue in the Florisville Police Department. It needs to be open and it needs to be transparent. Personnel files, training files, and records. Wow. This was crazy. I, I, I've never been in an apartment like this where I could walk, I couldn't walk in and say, "Hey, I need the training files for all your officers." And I asked multiple times and be told 15 different answers. And I kept getting told, "Well, the chief has it, the chief has it." When my interview with the chief, I asked explicitly, "Do you have the training personnel files for the officer?" "No, I don't have any of those files. They're all over here in the city." Oh, my God. I hope that there's not. I hope there's some file captain somewhere that he mistook and said, "Well, yeah, I don't have them," but maybe he did. Because the files here are a mess. They don't meet any of the state requirements regarding T-CO. And for one of the, for that reason, I am saying, contact T-CO. Do an audit of the police officer, hiring files, training records, and current status of every officer here. Because you've got background investigations conducted by one individual in the investigations divisions. They are the sloppiest investigations I've ever seen in any department ever on the hiring of an officer. Some of them don't even have background investigations. Some of them don't account for issues. You have one officer that was arrested as a juvenile for assault. I want to see a report about what that assault looked like. I want to see who did the background investigation on that officer. That officer, it turns out, he may be an outstanding officer, but I want to know about that as, as a, as a chief of police. I would want to know about those kinds of things. And you need to have them documented in case some, some kind of issue comes up. There was no audit, there was no T-CO kind of requirement regarding kind of a check-off, "Did you do 40 hours of in-service training every two years?" There were certificates just haphazardly stuck in over the course of an officer's career that they had attended. And that was it, okay? So, I was pretty upset with that, to be very honest, because that's going to cost you. That's going to cost you big time if you ever get sued. But it's also going to probably get, it's going to cost you because when you contact T-CO to do the audit, they're going to come in here and they're going to say, "Hey, you've got some real problems and you're going to have to suspend these officers until they meet their status." Now, let me explain. I don't do audits and I don't do investigations. I don't do a criminal investigation. Someone will say, "Hey, this investigation of the police department." I'm not an investigator. I'm simply an efficiency and effectiveness expert. I'm looking at the staffing, the leadership. I'm looking at the department in terms of how efficient it is. I'm looking at how well it serves its community, okay? T-CO is going to come in here, they'll do an audit. I also suggest that you find one person inside the police department that doesn't audit or doesn't administrate you, officer. And maybe that person doesn't audit first. In other words, get over here, get those records cleaned up as best as you possibly can. Get T-CO in here, ask them for their help and their guidance, okay? Because you've got some problems there, guys. And I'm not telling you anything new because you brought them up to me. You brought this issue up to me. One guy said, "I don't get it. I've been trying to go to training and I can't go to training." And yet, other people do go to training. I tried to find a policy on who goes to training and who doesn't. I could find none. I was asking for those policies. I was told they would be sent to me. None came. I asked over and over again, "Who determines what training you go to?" The answer kept coming back kind of sporadic. "Well, I kind of want to go to that." "Well, I kind of want to go to that training," or, "It was up here in San Antonio when it was chief," and you lie. And I got kind of upset about that because we have three officers, I think, think it's three officers, don't quote on, it's in the report, that went to hostage negotiation school when they, when they really...